I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 24th, 2018, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
She will be along shortly.
Momentarily, okay. And I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted and we are going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and we have troop, is it 539?
Yes.
Troop 539 here tonight to lead us in the pledge. If you'd like to come forward and please rise and join us in the pledge.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
Item three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? So, motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is community comment. For community comment, we ask that you come up to the table and tonight, we're asking that anyone making comment sign in with their name and address and also state your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone who would like to make community comment tonight? Any community comment? Come on up.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Dana James. Do you need my address also?
Yes, we need your address and then when you're done, if you could sign in also. Thank you.
Dana, get 9011 West Hawthorne Lane. I'm sorry, but I'm late.
Oh, I thought it was on. (laughter) Pardon me.
I didn't hear echoes when it was...
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to say it again now? I'm sure everybody heard. I just have questions about the new formatting for the middle school. I have concerns as far as how is that going to address the gifted and talented program also and I have concerns that teachers and actually the world in general is becoming very specialized. So, teachers are specialized in math or science or literacy, that it concerns me that they're going to be teaching things that are not in their passion or their specialization, that that gives me concern. And I was just curious if the, if there was an anonymous poll done of all the middle school teachers to find out their feedback on what they thought of this, some sort of anonymous thing. So, obviously, there's no punitive impact on that and also if you have surveyed the students and get their opinion or the parents to find out what they think of the whole process. And I don't have all the details as far as what is proposed, so I guess I'd like more information, but that's, that's my concern.
Okay. Thanks for your questions. This is not an agenda item, so we won't be answering your questions.
No, I understand.
But, Mr. Reuter, if you write down your phone number and your address, he can give you a call back if you like.
Okay.
To answer your questions, but I would like to tell the audience that we did have a presentation on this subject at our March 9th meeting, if you'd like to look at that video of the meeting.
Okay.
So, there is a presentation on that and it'll, it'll show you that our teachers were involved in the process, but Mr. Reuter will contact you if you like.
Okay. Were all the teachers involved though, or was there just a focus group?
As I said, we...
Okay.
...talking about that tonight, but it wasn't a focus group.
Okay.
The teachers were all involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comment this evening? Any other comment? With that, I'll close community comment and I'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, school board announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight? Any announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, November 14th, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM and a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, December 12th, 2018, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. For item eight, reports, presentations and other school business, we have an Eagle Scout presentation and I'd like to invite scout Ethan Wenzel to come up to the front and if you'd like to invite your parents up, you may also do that.
So, would you like to tell us a little bit about why you're here?
I did a Eagle Scout project for all five schools in the Franklin Public School District, all five elementary schools and I built buddy benches to help implement a better anti-bullying program within schools. And tying with that, I made a program and a video that will be presented tonight.
Okay, would you like to ask who's at the video first?
Everybody's fine.
Okay. (laughter) Are they first? Is that such a good tear?
Hi, my name is Ethan Wenzel and I'm a Boy Scout troop 539. I attended Countrydale Elementary School and know what it feels like to be lonely on the playground. That's where I brought my ideas to the district and we came up with the Buddy Bench Program. My Eagle Scout project is designed to help, help the Franklin Public School system, you need school, two top quality benches built by my troop 539 here in Franklin. Our troop consists of Franklin classmates who sit in classes just like you. The goal of the Buddy Bench Program is to designate a place for kids to go and when they don't have time enough to play with that day, your teachers will communicate direction to you and create an atmosphere of caring and nominating people to watch the bench each day. For example, you're a brand new student to the school and you don't know anyone, you go and sit on the bench and a friend will find you. Or say the group you usually play with isn't getting along, you're excluded. Come sit on the bench, someone will find you. If you sit on the bench and someone asks you to play, play with each other. If you sit on the bench and a classmate is watching, try to be during recess, go play with that mate. The only rule is you can't say no to someone if they ask you to play. Focus on the playground, we can make new friends every day. You can't teach unfeared, but you can inspire them. Yeah, this is my dad. He is also the Scout Master of our troop and he has helped a lot of our troops over the years.
And your mom?
My mom is videotaping my...
(laughter) And I'd just like to say, Ethan, on behalf of the Franklin Public Schools Board of Education, I'd like to commend you for taking the path and working to achieve the highest rank in Boy Scouts, Eagle Scout. As part of that path, you chose a project consisting of constructing two buddy benches for each of the Franklin Public School District's five elementary schools. The benches were constructed with the help of your troop and installed in designated locations after consulting with the Building and Grounds Department. You also created a companion video to be used with the Buddy Bench Program. Ethan, our school community appreciates your ability to set goals, work hard, show commitment and complete a challenge. You are a model for your peers and are establishing a good foundation for future leadership. You have demonstrated that kindness can truly make a difference in our schools and communities. The Board wishes you continued success with your academic studies, with your path in scouting and in all of your future endeavors. So, with that, Dr. Miller.
Thank you. I love you. Thank you very much.
Oh. (laughter) Congratulations. So, item 8B is our 4K proposal and we have Mr. Reuter.
I do have a brief presentation that'll walk us through. So, good evening, everyone. I'm extremely excited to be here this evening to talk about the last eight months in Franklin Public Schools and the planning and preparation that have taken place in order to bring to you tonight a final proposal that you've had the last 12 days to review as well as draft copies prior to that and board updates. But first, I'd like to thank the 26 participants that helped inform this draft, this proposal, two of them being fellow board members, Mr. Nielsen and Ms. Larson. And then, we do have some of the committee members from the Collaborative Committee that was comprised of teachers, parents, community members and school administration. If you could please stand if you're on part of the Collaborative Committee. So, thank you for your time, everybody.[711.12][711.12](applause) So, Y4K, if you reference page two of the proposal, we've talked about and you've heard this evening from our principals, the focus that we've had over the past few years and continue to have the focus of building college, career and life-ready students and understanding those 13 years of schooling they go through in Franklin Public Schools and how a 4K program would, would enhance an already quality school district. And we think about our five core values that we've adopted as a district in the last calendar year. We think about equity and access. I shared data with you prior this year of the number of students who participate in a 4K program currently that have come into our school district over the last two years and it's around 50%. By providing a quality program within the district, we'd have equitable access at all of our elementaries for our community to engage in. We think of the core value of personal growth and you think about growing academic and social skills in the youngest of learners and how that sets that foundation of college and career readiness. We look about, we look at innovation, new ideas and new ways of teaching kids that are earliest learners and how we will, again, through a 4K program, set that foundation. And stewardship, being stewards to the community and setting the stage to give back to our community those early equitable practices and then well-being. Develop, the foundation of four-year-old kindergarten is really about that social, emotional learning and the development through play and socialization. So, we'd start to set that foundation of well-being in the life of that student's journey for the next 13 years. I'm going to walk you through the timeline and process and then some of the logistics of 4K, so I'd ask that you, you hold your questions to the end and then all the, Dr. Miller, Mr. Milzer and I, myself, can answer any of the questions that might be outstanding from the proposal. So, but if you remember back to February 28th, eight, about eight months ago, Dr. Miller, Mr. Cohen and I did a presentation about Y4K and why we're going to put together a collaborative committee to investigate and ultimately bring a final proposal to you with the intent of engage, of bringing a program to Franklin Public Schools. In March of last, of this last year, a communication was sent out to all district staff as well as current parents of students in Franklin Public Schools, expressing the intent to move forward with a program proposal for the Board of Education. And then, it also elicited parent feedback as parents that were interested in being part of that collaborative committee. In the month of March, I met with all of our local providers within our district boundaries to share our intent of moving forward with the proposal and possible implementation of 4K as there will be adverse effects to those local private providers. And summer of this, this past summer, Dr. Miller and I composed a public short article about 4K and what it is and our intent to move forward as a district with a proposal to the Board of Education in the opening doors publication, so it was more widespread communication. Then, you can see, starting in May of 2018 and through this fall, the Collaborative Committee met multiple times. I've shared multiple updates with you of what we've done as a collaborative committee team. Mr. Nielsen and Ms. Larson have shared some updates as well as we looked at research and best practices. We looked at determining a school-based versus a community-based program. We looked at some of the components of curriculum and instruction and what that would look like in a full day versus a half day and worked through process and got feedback from those various stakeholders. June of this past summer, I shared an update of that work of the Collaborative Committee and then in August 23rd, many of you attended, we shared, we had two different be-heard sessions where community members were invited to share their questions and thoughts about 4K, so it would help inform the final proposal that was being brought to you this evening. Again, then there was an update to you about those, that those be-heard sessions, as well as then I shared, we would be sending out a community survey of the three-year-old population within the school district boundaries to get some of their perspectives and thoughts about a quality 4K program in Franklin Public Schools. Just this last month, then I shared with you those, that data of, of the survey and the participants and what they had to say. And all of that information went into those final, that final board report that we brought to you. So, with all of that gathering of information over the last eight months, looking at research of quality early childhood programs, looking at different models of other high-performing school districts, collaborating with the various stakeholders, it's the recommendation of district administration to approve a school-based, half-day, 4K program at .6 FTE for the 2019-2020 academic school year. So, when we look, when you look through this large document with the 4K proposal, I wanted to highlight a few program structures and, and academic points, so that if you had further questions, we can clarify that this evening. We're looking again, as I said in the recommendation, a half-day program that's school-based, so it'd be onsite at all five elementaries. AM sessions would run as follows up there. The start time for AM sessions would be the same that is for 5K through sixth graders currently at each of our elementaries. And the afternoon sessions would pick up about midday, but their dismissal time would be the same as all of our elementary schools' dismissal times. The program would be steeped on the following areas, based on the Wisconsin Model Early Learning Standards. We would have a strong foundation of literacy, mathematics, science and that huge aspect of early learning around social, emotional learning and play. And I think when you see the term play, you say, what does that mean? And I've shared examples in the past. You can teach a lot about social skills by letting young children interact and play. So, they might be in a kitchen setting or a setting in the classroom where they have to, they have to count or separate by color, let's say, ingredients for a recipe and they have manipulatives in front of them. And part of that is, if I'm working with Mr. Cohen, we take turns and we communicate and work with each other through play and that builds that social skill level where all of these children, it's their first experience to a school setting and many children, it's their first experience outside of the home or with people they've grown up with in their very short, brief time and as, as humans. So, social, emotional learning and play is a huge foundational piece that only helps elevate literacy, mathematics and science, which the Wisconsin Model Early Learning Standards are built upon. One of the questions about transportation is, well, how do they get to and from school and what does that look like? Four-year-old kindergartners would also ride our district buses, depending upon morning or afternoon sessions that they would attend. All transportation guidelines would apply that currently exist in, for 5K through 12-year-old, 12th grade students. There would be no differentiation, other than there would be a split in the day where students go home at the midpoint and, or go to a daycare provider within their elementary school setting boundaries, as well as in the afternoon, students would come to school midday and then go home with the afternoon bus routes. So, there would be no change in our policy or transportation guidelines. Before and after school was a question that was brought forward by the Collaborative Committee. We also asked the community their thoughts about that. We would still offer before-school and after-school kids club as we currently do for K through six at our five elementaries. The start time for kids club is 6:45 AM, so if you have a child that you need to drop off before work for, and they are part of the morning section of a 4K program at any of the five elementaries, they could utilize before-school services. There would be no midday daycare provider onsite as we don't have that capacity within our five elementaries. But we would have, for students attending the afternoon session of a 4K program, they would be able to utilize the after-school kids club programming that starts at the conclusion of the school day at each building and runs until 6:00 PM. I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Milzer to discuss the cost of 4K.
Yeah, and estimating the, the costs, the financial impacts are overall positive. Obviously, it costs more to run a 4K program, so the expenses do increase, but there's changes in the revenues that you might not expect. One of those being, there's a grant for 4K, so we've estimated what we would receive from the grant over the first two years, as well as additional aid coming to the district because we have additional students. And the last would be property taxes. And in the first year, only, we would see an increase in property taxes and a little bit of fund balance used to help get the program off the ground. And then, after that, the taxes would go back to below the level they were at before and we wouldn't be using any more fund balance. The program would pay for itself after that first year. So, looking at it in total, obviously, a very positive thing to be able to provide a program like this and, and have a positive financial impact on the district.
Staying close to the microphone. So, if 4K is approved by the board, we are more than ready to get started. So, we would begin with a press release that would be sent out first thing tomorrow, letting our community know that we would be having 4K in the district. We'll have a, an advertising campaign so that people know that it's here and they know to enroll their children. We'll share our 4K plan with our providers. We are going to be developing our policy around 4K and get that enrollment process started. We're, we're aiming for the beginning of December to start enrolling our students in 4K. And of course, a curriculum team will be hard at work getting ready so that when the children arrive next fall, we're ready for them. So, those would be our, our next steps and we're ready to go if this plan is approved this evening.
So, with that, we feel we have a very comprehensive plan and we open this portion up to questions that the board may have.
I just have one question. How does this impact early childhood? We still have an early childhood program, or would that...
We would, we would. So, looking at our students who are three-years-old would still be in that early childhood program and then four-year-olds would be with age-appropriate peers through the 4K program.
Chris, what was the reason going to half-day rather than full-day?
One is a capacity issue as well as a cost issue. Reimbursement at the max can be at .6 FTE. We, we went with the .6, even though students will only be here at .5. We would have additional community events that would allow us a .6 reimbursement rate, so it'd be more revenue, as well as it would help educate our community and make those connections with parents. But, a full day, we wouldn't have full reimbursement as we do in grades kindergarten through 12th grade.
Going into the funding of it, this is the part that worries me. Year one, according to your estimates, we need to increase property tax assessments $22 per $100,000. But in year two, we can drop that assessment $31 per $100,000. That's a $53 per $100,000 swing in our property taxes. Your financials doesn't really explain how that works.
Mr. Wilson?
The, well, the taxes would, would increase next year to pay for the program and then the following year, they would drop that amount. And what we've done with this year's budget is to try and smooth out that increase so that it isn't a full increase by that amount, but that we're partway there at the end of this year and then there's, there would be a smaller increase to get to that level after that and then it would come down. And we'd have to see, and that's three years out, we'd have to see where we are at that time on, on what happens with the, with the tax level. Of course, we're talking, I'm isolating this program to just the effect of this program to see what, what it does. It doesn't take into account what's going on with our operations budget or anything else.
Right.
So, with all of those things in play, we're trying to make it as smooth a transition as possible.
And then, I had one other question. Right now, in Franklin, there's 824 roughly housing starts under development. Have we looked at what type of projection that's going to be as far as increases in our classrooms existing?
That's a, that's a great question. I don't, I don't have an answer to that because we don't know what the demographic of a family that starts there, if they have children or not. We're confident with the move of sixth grade to the middle school. It'll alleviate space at all of our elementaries and when you think about a half-day program, you can run two sections in one classroom because you have a morning and afternoon section. So, it's not traditionally like a kindergarten class section that is an all-day utilizing a specific space. So, a, a school that runs four sections of 4K, that's only two classrooms.
Jim, just to piggyback on Mr. Gamble's comments on the financial side, how did, how did we kind of settle in on what the additional property taxes would be and how much was used for fund balance?
By running, running really a complete scenario, revenue and expenses for this program and then holding everything else constant that we're doing to see the effect of this program only.
So, so we didn't, I'm assuming if you would have projected a, a higher increase in the taxes, we would use no fund balance?
We're limited on how much we can increase taxes, so we would, we wouldn't be able to do that if it, if it didn't fit into the state formula.
Okay.
So, it's, they still, the 4K students still fit into the formula the same way. If you, if you have a number of 4K students, you can put them into the formula with the other students and that's what's used to figure out how much we can tax and, and how much we get from the state and for those two to make up our revenue limit. So, that continues with this program. It isn't any really special funding for 4K, other than the grant. So, we wouldn't be able to raise taxes above the level that the state would allow us to.
But conversely, then, we could, we wouldn't have to necessarily charge or raise taxes as much as we're projecting here if we were to use more fund balance in year one. Would, is that also true?
You could.
Because...
And it may, I mean, this is, this is every one of the students that we've identified applying for the program and coming. We don't know that that's the case either. We'll know better after we have an open enrollment and we see what, what children are doing. If, if only half of them come, it would be half of that amount, but we could look at that as an option too.
And, and these numbers are projections. This isn't something that, or is this, this isn't the 19, no, this isn't finalized yet. These are just projection numbers. So...
Right.
Because my concern is if we, we project this kind of increase in 2019, 20, in 19 and 20 and just use a little bit of fund balance, but then we're projecting that the taxes are going to come down in years two, three and four, there's no guarantee that they're going to come down in years two, three and four. And if we have that luxury of not projecting so high on year one, then if, then we don't have to raise taxes in year one and we talk about smoothing it out, then we can get buffer through fund balance.
Right. This is, this is a projection based on going to the revenue limit with this program, just like any other. How we actually do it, we still have wide open how we do that because that really isn't until the 19, 20 school year. And, and as I indicated in my memo, we, we do want to keep taxes smoother than going up and down. No one likes that. So, that's one of the things we'd look at, is if, if that was going to be too great an increase, you could say, sure, we'll use a little more fund balance this year and we'll make it through and then we're fine after the, into the second year and the third year. That's definitely an option.
Yeah, because I honestly wasn't expecting this table at all. I was, this is great news, I think, with the projections being how the revenue could be and the grants and everything and have this be as little of a financial impact that we're really going to have on the program. I was pleasantly, I was pleasantly surprised. I just, when I saw that year one, understanding it was just a projection...
Right. Right.
I wasn't so crazy about that. But that's a conversation that can be, you know, dealt with later on, so.
Right.
But other than that, Chris, I just want to thank you and congratulate you and the team you had put together, and I enjoyed serving on the committee. This is a day that has been a long time coming, and things that a board, long before I got on the board, said this is something we need to do, and we've never had the space to do it, never had the opportunity to do it. And we had the opportunity to do it, and I think you've done a great job of putting this program, or this proposal together.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I agree. I prefer to use more fund balance also. But I had a question, which I brought up one other time, about the class size. The proposal says target size of 17 students. And again, that depends on how many join the program, but Dr. Miller referred to, we would have to do policy later, so that would, the proposal would be, policy would be separate from any other policy we have on class size? It would, it would be a separate 4K policy?
No, not necessarily. We have a class-size policy where we can embed it in that policy.
So, it's totally up to the board what our class size would be for 4K?
My turn?
Yeah.
Are there any statistics from other school districts that show eligible participants versus actual participants? Because our projections here are based on 100% participation, and we know that's not going to be the case. So, are there any other statistics from other districts that have actual...
Yeah, that's a really good question, Mr. Lewis. The school districts have many different ways of doing 4K. For instance, there's community-based, there's school-based, and then it's about, you know, there's different demographics within each district. I asked that question of the Department of Public Instruction. Their early learning coordinator shared with me that, you know, a community that is not aware of 4K and it hasn't been something that they've wanted for a long time usually reach an 80% first year, because again, it's not state statute mandated like kindergarten. My feeling, based on the feedback we've gotten from the survey, as well as members that have, community members that have called me directly or spoke with our elementary principals, and to Mr. Nielsen's point, this has been a long-time conversation. I look back at the original listening session, I believe from 2009, where there was a lot of discussion of 4K. So, we're, we don't have a statistic of, you know, every district's a little different based on their community's feel around it, but I believe with the younger population we have here, that there's going to be a high turnout within year one, and it will only grow, as well as to Mr. Gamble's point, we have new development happening, and it's another draw to start a family in Franklin because school is one of the big draws here, as well as I heard a lot from community members this year in the be-heard sessions, after meetings, phone calls I had. We moved here, and we didn't realize there was a 4K program. So, now I'm, you know, paying for it here, or I'm driving my kids there, whatever it might be. So, this would just be an added piece to that overall programming.
I have one other question. Mr. Reuter, so, or maybe Mr. Milzer, is it my understanding that we have to have, we have to officially approve or adopt a 4K program before you can apply for grant funding?
The next, the next piece, you would approve to move that we will allow, have a 4K program, and then there's an actual form, I thought, with the Department of Public Construction. We have to meet certain criteria. One of them is that it's board-approved, we have transportation, we have all the pieces that are outlined here. The state would then approve that, and then we can apply for the grant funding.
And in your opinion, the odds of us not getting the grant funding that you're proposing or showing here is...
When I spoke to the folks at DPI, they didn't think there were, there aren't that many districts out there that don't have 4K, so the chances of us getting the grant or getting more of the grant than districts in the past are very good. And they know how many were in last year, which affects this, which we took into account. So, they thought there was a very good chance. They couldn't guarantee anything. So, we didn't, we didn't go for the maximum, we just went for half of that.
Okay, thank you. There's a grant, and you only went for half the grant?
Not that we only went for half of it, that we only took about half of it into account as far as revenue.
In your forecast, projected forecast.
Yeah. We can't apply for the grant until after the board would approve it, but we didn't want to show that we would get the maximum amount from the grant because it's possible other, another district could step up and we would only get half.
Is this an annual grant or something to help you start up?
It's a two-year grant to help you start up.
Okay.
And am I correct in understanding that there's the possibility that the state will mandate four-year-old kindergarten without a grant to start the program?
There's, there's been conversations at the state level that there's a possibility in the next biennial budget, and that the districts that aren't on board yet need to get on board, and funding may dry up, so.
Yeah, I think we take for granted in Franklin that everyone is able to go to private 4K, and we have some excellent private and parochial 4K programs in Franklin, but that might not be the case, that everyone can go to private. There might be transportation issues, there might be financial issues or family issues, and I think it's good for us to think about providing an equal opportunity to everyone to have this learning opportunity. So, that's just another thing to think about. That's just one of my thoughts.
I have a question for Jim. Your teacher and EA salary and benefits, what goes into that calculation, and more importantly, what did you use for a trending factor going forward in the second, third, and fourth year?
Well, we estimated what a, roughly a starting teacher's salary would be for that, and I believe we used 2% on the salary and 4% on benefits.
What have your benefits increases been for the past two or three years as far as percentages?
Most of our benefits haven't increased, but health insurance is the big one, and we've been either 0 or up to 4%.
Really? Okay.
Does anyone want to entertain a motion?
I would entertain a motion to approve the half-day, school-based, four-year-old kindergarten program at a .60 FTE reimbursement in the Franklin Public Schools, starting in the 2019-2020 academic school year.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Larson, and a second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion?
The whole taxes thing bothers me, as far as how, you know, what can we do to either use more fund balance so that it levels out those taxes even more?
The amount isn't that large, so we could certainly use fund balance for that.
Especially if you don't get, again, this is based on 100% participation, so you can move money around. Say the fund balance stays the same, and obviously, if it's only 80%, your other numbers are going to be lower, so therefore, any tax increase would be lower.
Does the grant, startup grant, allow for 100% funding, potentially?
That the grant would fund 100%?
Right.
No, I don't know as they have a rule on that, but even if we got 100% of it, it wouldn't pay for the whole program.
You mean if we didn't get 100% enrollment, or what did you mean, Linda? 100% funding?
Well, I understand that it's some certain amount at the state level, and if we're the only district applying, do they give it out based on enrollment, or they just give it out on base, giving up among the...
There's a maximum amount per student.
On the rest?
I mean, will that be based on actual students that we have enrolled, or is it just on our 100% guesstimate?
No, it's based on our actual enrollment of 4K students.
The third Friday count, just like the other?
Right. Yep, just like the other one. So, the, if, if no one applied for this grant and the state had that some certain funding, it would just sit there. Or if one district applied, they still have the same maximum amount per student.
The maximum amount is $3,000 per student first year.
So, I hear what you're saying, Larry, but I think when it comes time for that discussion, I think we're, we're turning over all the rocks to make sure that it's a budget that makes sense, because, you know, I don't want to raise taxes one year only to say we're going to get it back in the second, and then we got a lot of moving parts in this budget. You never know what's going to happen in year two. So, I, I'm right there with you, and I don't think, I don't think we would approve something that wouldn't be right for Franklin or taxpayers. And again, this is a projection.
If you get the grant funding first year, do you have to reapply for the second year, or it looks like it's about half the second year? Is that how it works, or...
My understanding is that once you've applied, then yes, you're in for the second year, and you could receive half of what you received the first year.
Gotcha.
Per student.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Gamble?
No.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries, six aye, one no. And thank you for our committee, for work on the committee. And we'll move on to item 8C, the 2018-19 budget approval. Mr. Milzer, can I go back to one item? Mrs. Larson, do you have your motion written down?
I do.
Can you pass it on to Lisa?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Milzer?
Tonight, we have the third and final draft of the budget for 2018-19. The previous drafts, as you know, really started in March. They were built on estimates. From back at that point, we carried that through until now, when we find out how much aid we're going to get from the state, we know what staff we're going to have, how much they're going to be paid, what benefits they've chosen, and all of that. So, all of that goes into this draft to make it much closer to actual. The good news is that we did receive more aid from the state than we had projected in draft number one, $853,000 more, which is definitely good news for the district. We reduced the tax levy increase to 1.2%, or about $14 per 100,000 of assessed value. In other revenues, our interest increased $40,000 based on the trend in rates, and E-rate increased by $158,000 because of the internet connection that we're doing with the fiber. We also added the purchase of land to this draft in the budget, which accounts for the expenses being about $500,000 more than revenue. Again, using fund balance for most of that purchase is what we're projecting, although when we get to the end of the year, it's probable that we wouldn't be using any fund balance for that. Overall, it's an excellent budget for the district. It contains all the programs and initiatives that we've talked about throughout the year and that we had in draft number one. It reduces the tax effect from the first draft, helps to smooth out the levies like we talked about over the two years, provides funding to reduce long-term interest through a defeasance in the Fund 39 for debt service, and it provides for that additional purchase of land for the district. So, I think it's good news all around for the district, and tonight, the board would just need to adopt the adoption format of the budget, and then we can report to the city the tax levy amounts by their deadline.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on draft three of the budget? Hi, I'm looking for a motion.
I have one. Jim, I know I asked you about this before, but there was the issue of the locker rooms at the high school.
Mm-hmm.
When is, when is that going to be scheduled, or what, what does that involve, and I guess why wouldn't that be included in this year's budget?
It wouldn't be done by the end of June. We have an overall plan for that, but we don't have, all of that funding would come from our Fund 46 money, and we don't have enough in there to do that, which we'd be looking to add to that amount at the end of this year. So, at the end of June, we'd add to that and move forward. We'll probably move forward with planning, and that will come to the board yet this year as a part of the overall, what do we need to do as a district on many fronts, on maintenance everywhere, the purchase of large tracts of land, and all of those things. So, that will be coming to you yet, but we wouldn't be spending that money during this year. We would, there's no way we'd get to that, so that's why it's not included.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of what that's going to cost to do the lockers?
Not off the top of my head. I will have an estimate for you, and we've broken it into all kinds of manageable pieces so that we can look at it many different ways and see how we can best make that happen.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2018-19 budget draft three. Do I hear that motion? So, moved. Motion by Mrs. Larson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gamble?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Milzer. And item 8D, the treasurer's report, is available in the board docs library. 8E, forest park construction update, Mr. Milzer?
It's coming along. You can see all kinds of changes outside the building. There's concrete curbing in front here around the office for the office parking, all of that's in, and then behind the building, there's a large parking area where all the curbing is in, the light poles are in, and today, they were out there smoothing that out for paving. They're going to pave that, they hope, at the end of this week, and then kind of flip over and pave the front part of the building next week. So, that will make it look very different as well. The loading dock approach, the concrete is in, they're working on the landscaping and back. There are lots of trees all over in the back, and the, all the way around our wetland that's back there, there's innumerable trees. Some of the wetland vegetation is in, where they plant the little plants that can grow in the watered soil. Inside the building, the sections that we saw that were furthest along are even farther, they look like they're almost done. The flooring is going in, some of the rubber flooring, and then the carpeting. The lights are in, the ceilings are in. I walked past one room, and my motion turned the lights on in there, so I know they're getting close on those. In the south back hall, they're painting and doing the accent colors, so we're starting to get a glimpse of what that will look like. Upstairs in the back wing, they're finishing the drywall and the painting. The big learning stairs in the commons is all poured in concrete for now, it doesn't have the wood on it yet, but that part's done. In the gym, the basketball backboards are all in, and the accent striping is in, the sound panels are in, and it's really starting to look nice, like a really nice gym. And one of the things I noticed, which is unfortunately very... And one of the things I noticed, which is unfortunately very geeky, was how organized and clearly labeled all the piping is in the ceiling. It isn't just really, it says exactly on it what it is and it shows an arrow for the direction of flow for everything to make it easier. And of course, now, all of the electrical conduit based on, is a different color based on what it's for. If it's low voltage or if it's for fire safety or just regular power, it's all different colors. So it's much easier to tell what's going on when you get above the ceiling and there's a million pipes up there. So it's coming along.
I hope you're not anticipating repairs with all those marked pipes.
At, at some point, there are always repairs.
Is it fully enclosed then?
Not quite. The, the doorways are just plywood doors that they've made for now. So it's semi-enclosed, but it isn't the, the final doors.
And is the heating working or?
The heating in some parts of the building is working, not everywhere.
And how are we handling technology? Is, are they putting technology in or, or, when does that go in? Is it wireless?
There's, there's both wired and wireless. Of course, you have to wire for wireless too. So all of that is going in right now. That's part of the wiring and the conduit that's going in. And then as we get farther along, our people will put in the last of the electronic units in the closets and so forth to make the network go.
And how many screens and TVs?
I can tell you there are none in the building right now.
None.
Ms. Nelinski's going to be here in February and she's going to do a technology report. And she's going to highlight that technology for you at that meeting. She'll actually bring one of the large screen panels and demonstrate how it's going to be used in a classroom here.
Great. And I didn't notice until our presentation because it was overcrowded. Here we have Representative Ken Skoronsky here. So thank you for being here in our important meeting.
I probably got a wet today, I could come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And item nine, school board liaison reports. Board liaison reports. Do we have any regular reports tonight? Ms. Witkowski?
I did attend Education Foundation Board Meeting. We had teacher awards given out. They were parent nominated from the prior year. There were a couple grant awards given out. There'll be an author visit in somebody's school. And there is also some fabulous science force probes that will be used to determine forces. Instead of using the, whether the eggs break, they can actually measure forces with these things. There was one grant that is not, that is still being, being worked on. It was Conversations on Race. I think Judy, you've been involved a little bit in that.
I don't know much about it.
And I'll check it with you on that later. And of course, we have the auction event coming up. It's in November. And I still have tickets to sell and would hope somebody, would you consider attending? Also, I did attend the Employment for Education Committee Meeting. We had our first meeting last night. And we kind of met the members that were there, citizen members, employers, higher education member representation. We kicked around what we think the future of work is, what it looks like. And also reviewed the connection between the coherence plans and values with the, there's a whole work plan that they already have lined up for next year.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay. And then 9B, school and community engagement visits. I'll start with that. I went to the Ben Franklin Walk-a-thon where we were invited from Mrs. Spursky. And Mrs. Wickman was also there in charge of the snacks and Mr. Gamble was, that's your school, correct?
Yes.
Your liaison school. So you might want to speak about it too. It was a really cold morning, but the kids had their jackets off. They were very energetic and it was a great event. The volunteers there worked very hard. And Mrs. Spursky is looking for another volunteer for that, aren't you?
One more year.
Oh, one more year. Okay. It, it was a great event. I don't know if you want to say anything about it?
I was impressed. The kids are outside running. It was, for the adults, we were all cold. Kids are out there shedding jackets left and right. I would say the middle school, high school track future is probably looking pretty good with the way some of them were running.
The best part was the kindergartners. When they came out, they start running one way and then they just followed a teacher and, like bees. They just went another, they just, it was very cute. And then I attended on Broadway performance. Mrs. Witkowski was there, Dr. Miller was there. It was the concert collaboration that had over 250 Franklin High School students, choir members, instrumental combo, stage crew students. And I, I think there were about 18 different performance, different Broadway numbers. There was something for everyone there and the students, they're awesome. They, they really are, all different levels of talent. And they even had the little kids there doing a performance. So it was really good. Mr. Witkowski, you want to say anything about it since you were there?
I had the program if you're interested. Also, I think it was neat. They also invited the alumni to come up also. So really reaching out and touching on a lot of different people. And it's well-attended. The place is almost full. A lot of energy. It's impressive that it's, they can put this on. It's so, early in the year, I don't know how they do it.
Yeah, it was great.
I wouldn't miss it.
And I, I attended Japan Fest Cafe at Franklin High School last Sunday. It was just filled with Japanese booths with food and jewelry and crafts. And Mr. Kenya was there with the Japanese students. And they were helping children make traditional Japanese masks. And they were teaching visitors origami and they were writing your name in Japanese. Karakana, that version of Japanese. Lots of food there and lots of people from the Japanese Milwaukee community there also. And then I went to the Pleasant View Art Session at Pleasant View. We were invited for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday where Marina Lee, the resident, the artist in residence, was there creating the permanent art pieces, 11 of them. The fiberglass bench and chalk tiles and with geometric shapes and that had fish on them. And the kids, they were, it, it covers all of our core values. It was a great experience to work with the kids. And Mrs. Witkowski also went, didn't she?
I went the next day and the second graders were there and painted a little bit.
Yeah, we got to paint.
It's amazing.
Anyone else?
I also did attend the Milwaukee Film Festival, the youth program. We, we, Franklin had, half the entries were from Franklin students. Interesting stuff that kids are into, so it was good too.
Thank you. And 10, school board debriefing. Ms. Dr. Miller, did you?
Yeah, so the approval of the 4K program really does support, I think, every single one of our values. And I do thank you for your diligence and ensuring that we put together a good proposal and a, and a good plan for this district. So I think that was one of the main ideas here tonight. I don't know if Mr. Kohn has something to add?
Yeah, I would just add, thank you for, thank you to our principals for being here tonight. And thank you for the board for engaging with them around their improvement efforts. We're looking forward to them coming back as well as our departmental leaders throughout the year, really to update you on the work we're doing around continuous improvement. Really, all of our core values are supported. Hopefully, you heard that in the presentations tonight and you'll continue to hear that throughout the year. Your support of their work is important, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
A lot of work.
Okay.
Well, I'm just going to say, this is an historic day. You know, there was, it was a pretty neat job.
All right. 11, future agenda items. We're scheduled for Robinwood School Presentation on November 14th. New course approvals on November 14th. Early college credit and Start College Now request approvals on November 14th. The enrollment and staffing report on December 12th. District, district administrator update, update and annual goals and performance standards on December 12th. The annual assessment report on December 12th. The building and grounds annual report, December 12th. And WASB resolutions either December 12th or January 9th. And then we're having our volition youth come to the board meeting to give an annual report on December 12th. And then a communications plan update on December 12th. So we have enrollment. Oh, enrollment and staffing is November 14th, not December 12th. Sorry about that. And these are tentative, subject to change. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Close. Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:31.